Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, October 22, 2025, Northampton Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so have those folks in your thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. As you can see, our annual tradition is to be supportive of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and most of us, when we can, wear pink in honor of that, so that's our bright pastel color of the evening. Oh, we have two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity will be for agenda items only. If you're interested in speaking on an agenda item, please sign up on the back, and it looks like I already have one coming up. And there's a second opportunity for public comment, which will be at the end of the meeting, and that can be on anything that you'd like to talk about. In each case, I'll say your name and have you come up to the microphone. So first, Karen Dunning, 451 Happer Road?
Duning.
Duning, I'm sorry. Would you like to speak?
No.
Oh, you just signed in to be here? Okay.
Welcome.
Rich, same?
Yeah.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
And on agenda items, Joe Lombardo.
Well, first, we put a public comment?
Yeah. Public comment on agenda items?
Oh, no, I question.
Okay, you want to be on the other one. So there are no public comment on agenda items this evening, and we'll move right along.
For long as you're up pretty quickly there.
We'll go to approval of the minutes. Yeah, if anybody'd like to speak at the end of the meeting, that's what the other sheet is for. Paula.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes of September 17 be approved by unanimous consent.
Any comments from anybody on the board?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kim, accounts payable?
Yes, I have the bills list for September 24, 2025. Total all funds, $801,381.23. I have the bills list for October 8, 2025. Total all funds, $2,360,072.25. And I have the bills list for October 22, 2025. Total all funds, $930,031.75.
Thanks, Kim. We'll take both of those under consent. Can I have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion from anybody on the board?
No.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We have no public hearings or unfinished business this evening, and we'll move right on to new business. First is a one-year extension option for Whitetail Disposal. Paula.
Okay. There's a contract for solid waste collection throughout the township, and it was awarded to Whitetail Disposal in October of 2022. The contract was for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2023, and ending on December 31, 2025. The contract provides the township may award two contract extensions as it's at its sole discretion. This provision was intended to allow the township to observe the performance of the collector during the initial term and provide the option to either extend the contract or terminate it and rebid for the service. The administration believes Whitetail Disposal has performed in accordance with its contractual obligations and can attest that it receives very few service complaints. We also confirm that Whitetail addresses complaints and collection issues in a timely fashion. As such, the administration recommends the board authorize a one-year contract extension to Whitetail Disposal for solid waste collection and transportation, household trash, yard waste, and recycling materials, beginning January 1, 2026, and ending on December 31, 2026. The contract extension will not require an increase in the annual trash collection fee. If the board agrees with this, I'd like to make the following motion, if that's appropriate.
Please.
Okay, I move to approve a one-year contract extension with Whitetail Disposal for solid waste collection and transportation, beginning January 1, 2026, and ending on December 31, 2026, at the annual per unit rates included in their bid proposal, and to authorize the township manager to execute the contract extension in accordance with the bid documents and specifications issued by the township.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any comment, Paula? Anything further?
I'm just happy that we're doing this. Their rates are good or comparable with everyone else, and they're not going to change for us, so.
Bob, any more comment?
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about the new service. Glad to extend it. I think it was wise to have that built into the contract, and we should take advantage of it.
Barry?
No, very happy with it. I mean, it was a little controversial when we converted to them, but it's much more efficient. It's a cleaner pickup, things like that, so I think the residents are very, very happy with the service, so very much support it and very pleased that we're going to do it again.
Kim, same?
I have to say that the residents have been very happy, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback for our trash service.
And my comment pretty much echoes it. You know, I've heard a lot of good stuff. It was a little touchy in the beginning because it was a big change in the way we did it, but I think most people are satisfied. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, consider ratification of the police collective bargaining agreement. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After months of negotiating, the administration has reached a tentative settlement on a new collective bargaining agreement with the Northampton Township Police Benevolent Association. As part of the process to finalize the agreement, the board must ratify the terms and conditions of the settlement proposal. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move to ratify the terms and conditions of a new collective bargaining agreement between Northampton Township and the Northampton Township Police Benevolent Association, as outlined in a memorandum of understanding dated September 30, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments? Any further comment?
So a lot of work has gone into this, probably some that I'm not even privy to. I know there's been a lot of discussion, much of which was brought before the board. I think as someone who has sat as an arbitrator and done many arbitrations, you don't want to go into arbitration if you can avoid arbitration, so I'm pleased to see that everyone was able to keep control of their own destiny. I'll use a term I don't frequently use in my work life. It was fair to all involved, and what we don't want ever is a situation where the police and the township are at war with each other, which is effectively what going to arbitration would have been. I think all parties came out of it well. I'm glad to see it was resolved, and I would hope that this is unanimously accepted.
Thanks. Kim, were you second? Did you say? I didn't know who. I couldn't hear who's second, but go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm really glad that we got this settled. Bob did a great job working with our officers, and our officers also did a great job coming to the table and, you know, working it out. I just think it's great that everybody worked together and got this done.
Paula?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there hasn't been an arbitration for 10 years, so.
No grievance for 10 years.
No grievances, yeah. I'm proud of that as a township, and I'm proud of Bob Pellegrino.
Barry?
Yeah, and hats off to Bob Pellegrino and the administration, but equally important, I think, the residents are very, very pleased with the police department we have today. The officers of the police department are very, very good, have very, very good working relationship with our residents, things like that, and I'm very proud when I see the police officers. I was down there last month and, you know, walked to the police station with the chief and everything, and it's just a very well-run organization, and the residents respect the police officers, and the police officers respect the residents. So it really works out very well for the township, so I'm very happy with it.
We have a fantastic police force. I mean, they are some of the best folks. They love this town as much as everybody else, and whether they live here or not, they treat it as their own town, which I really like about them. One thing I really like is this process takes a lot of time on both the police department's side, the officers that are on the team, Bob and his team, Bill. It's a five-year contract. We don't have to do this again for five years, which is good because, yeah, I mean, it really does, it takes a lot of effort and resources to do this, so I'm glad to see that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, barry winter storm service agreement with PennDOT.
Sure. So with PennDOT, PennDOT typically would enter into service contracts with local municipalities to do a lot of the snow removal and salt work. This is not for potholes or road repairs, but just doing the winter maintenance of the property of the township. In the township, we have about 200 miles of roads. Of the 200 miles, about 10% belong to the state and are PennDOT's responsibility, so the township and the state have entered into a contract, and basically the township takes full responsibility for plowing the roads, salting roads, and taking care of all the winter maintenance. Once again, it does not include potholes or other types of repair, but just the basic, you know, snow removal and salt. If we have an extraordinary storm, there is a provision in the contract that we can get extra compensation for that. The contract's a five-year term. It's very mutual for both sides, and it starts off with a base pay of about $60,000 per year. So the township gets paid $60,000 a year by PennDOT, and every year goes up about 2%. So I think it's a very great opportunity for both the state and the municipality to take advantage of it. So if I could add, I do the motion.
Please.
Should I move to approve resolution number R-25-15, authorizing and designating the township manager as a township official to execute a winter service agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for winter maintenance on the PennDOT roads identified in Exhibit A of the agreement?
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Kim's the second. Barry, any other comment?
No, I fully support it, and I think it's a good balance between the state and the municipality, and it's done throughout the state, so it really works out very well.
Kim?
I just, I don't like that four-letter word, "snow." Let's hope that we don't get a lot.
Speak for yourself. No, no, I want a lot of snow this year.
No snow.
I thought you meant plow.
No, no.
Snow plow. Paula?
It's good to know. I didn't know that the state automatically came out. It's good to know that. Take care of us.
No.
I'm actually glad that we can control doing the roads in our town and not have to rely on PennDOT and PennDOT trucks to get here. They have to come from afar, from far away. The guys that plow our roads in the township are the best of the best, and everybody talks about it. We talk about it every year. When you get to Northampton, the roads are clear and black, and the fact that we can get paid by PennDOT to keep our roads great, I think, is a great advantage for us. We have total control over how that goes. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks. Next, on the liaison reports, Kim?
Okay. First, Parks Rec. Don't miss the revamped Halloween happening this Friday, October 24, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the municipal park, featuring food trucks, a costume parade, contest, and showing of Hocus Pocus Under the Stars. Our first annual winter fest will be Friday, December 5, featuring menorah and tree lighting, Santa and Mrs. Claus, horse and carriage rides, live music, and a festive outdoor holiday marketplace. Congratulations to Sinead Powers, who recently became a certified Red Cross instructor. Now our popular babysitting classes are back. The first workshop scheduled for Election Day is already full. Kudos to Sinead for going above and beyond for the community. Now, most of our themed park ticket sales have closed for the season, but discounted tickets are still available through December for Sesame Place, Adventure Aquarium, the Museum of the American Revolution, AMC, and Regal Cinemas. It's a great Christmas gift or stocking stuffer. Visit www.NorthHamptonRec.com for the full range of programs, trips, and events for children, adults, and families of all ages. We look forward to a fun and festive fall season with the community. Now, the Senior Center. The Senior Center continues to be a hub of activity and fun. The center has added three new exercise classes. Balance Strength, Wednesdays from 2:15 to 3:15; Forever Fit, Thursdays from 12 to 1:00; and Beginner/Intermediate Line Dancing on Thursdays from 3:00 to 4:00. Join us for an Art with a Heart Watercolors Class the second Wednesday of each month. Participants will learn how to create a beautiful painted masterpiece. The fee is $15 for members and $19 for non-members. Love art? Two new classes are coming soon, Art Club and Ceramics. Fall League signups are underway. Shuffleboard and Dart Leagues begin next month. Tickets for the December 10 American Music Theater Holiday Show and Shady Mayfall Luncheon Trip are selling quickly. Stop by the center to get your seat. $130 for members and $140 for non-members. The annual holiday luncheon will be held on December 3 at the Northampton Valley Country Club. This event is open to members and non-members. Tickets are $35 and go on sale October 31. Have you purchased your Senior Center lottery tickets? The next drawing is on Tuesday, November 11. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at the Senior Center front desk. Only 400 tickets are sold. Great odds to win. Four $25 winners are picked every month, and four $100 winners, one $250 winner chosen in December at the annual holiday luncheon. And I just want to talk tomorrow, this is just a reminder to my senior sizes, tomorrow our class will be honoring those touched by cancer, patients, caregivers, friends, and family. I'm asking students to wear pink, and let's help others by participating in the Northampton Township Police Department's Dream Drive, a fresh start hygiene drive for those in need. Dream Drive creates essential hygiene kits for kids in foster care right here in Bucks County. Your support helps babies, children, and teens with personal care items that they need for their daily well-being. Some of the things, hold on, some of the items that are needed, body wash, shampoo, conditioner, deodorant, toothpaste, hand sanitizer, dental floss, feminine products, baby wipes, bibs, diaper rash cream, and we like to say, at senior size, gratitude is our attitude. So stop by tomorrow at our class and help others, and it's just going to be a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Veterans Advisory Commission. We are presently working on cleaning up the Dabrowski Park, which is the park with the waterfall in the middle of Richborough. There are improvements being made in the landscaping and on the brickwork repairs. And I just wanted to read something that was on Facebook today, and this person states that they have gotten several phone calls inquiring what's happening at the Robert Dabrowski Memorial Park. And the park was dedicated in 2007 in memory of PFC Bobby Dabrowski, Council Rock graduate, who was the first township resident killed in action in the global war on terror military campaign. In 2011, Holland resident Master Sergeant Kenneth Elwell was added to the KIA list supporting Operation Enduring Freedom. Okay, Kenny was a Council Rock graduate also. God bless America and all those who serve and protect. So that was just a little snippet. They're really sprucing up the park for Veterans Day. Service flags have been put up at the fountain wall right at the park, and the angles and the poles have all been straightened out. Okay, let's see, what else I want to say? The Worthington Mill Bridge dedication is State Rep. Kristen Morsell and Senator Frank Ferry are coordinating the dedication of this bridge to honor Colonel Daniel Larry Rubini. He is a longtime resident of Northampton Township and a hero, so to speak, with the vets, very admired man. The ceremony for that dedication to the bridge is on Friday, November 7, at 10:30. And they are going to close Worthington Mill Road, PennDOT will be, and the police, Northampton Police and Newtown Police will be there coordinating the event, so they'll be parking. Everyone will be told where to go. Okay, that's the day before our Veterans Day ceremony, and that will be held, the VAC's holding that on Saturday, November 8, at 11 o'clock at the Star Center School, which is the school right across from the library. And we've had a lot of help from Parks and Recreation Department coordinating with the VAC, the Veterans Advisory Commission, on details and help with the events and the programming lately. Okay. I also wanted to mention offhand that Senator Frank Ferry has a new email newsletter, and it's called News for Veterans, and I found it very interesting. If any vets want to go online and sign up, they go to Frank Ferry, News for Veterans, if they're interested. Right now, the Veterans Administration awarded $818 million in grants to help combat veteran homelessness, which is very prevalent today. More than $16 million of that money has been given to local organizations serving Pennsylvania veterans. This money assists with housing, healthcare, childcare, legal assistance, and other things locally. The DMVA, which is the Department of Military Veterans Affairs, helps vets with locating and correcting their military documents. A lot of vets have a hard time keeping track and getting answers. So I wanted to give out the phone number for the DMVA. That department is an 800 number, so it's 800-547-2838, if anyone wants to call and get information from them. And the last thing I want to say about the Veterans Committee is there is a website that a veteran can go to. It's ID, like I, like capital I, D, like David, dot me, and they can, they're eligible for football, NFL football tickets, up to almost 60% off at times to go to the game. So I wanted to say that. Oh, and then I was just informed today, just before the meeting, that the, there are four out of four young men out of five have been picked for the Little Quakers football team, and they are, four of them are from Northampton Township. So that was a big deal. I wanted to mention that. Okay, now I can go on to the library. That's enough for the vet. On Thursday, September 11, the library had a celebration to launch their new logo and branding and their new website. Attending the launch were a mix of board supervisors, of course, township administration, library board members, library staff, and other people in the community. A new four-foot by 10-foot library logo was added to the wall. It's a sign in the library's community room. And other things were made available at the library in a tent for our first public event after the launch. One of the new features of the website provides public access to submit room reservations requests online, so you can book a room to study or to have, you know, parties or whatever get-togethers. So it's at the Free Library in Northampton, and you go to freelibrary, all capitals, N-T- dash dot dash org. I'm sure if you just go to Northampton Library, you can find the spot where you go to reserve the room. So that's a new thing now. You can go online, you don't have to leave your house. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
Thank you. I have no reports tonight. I will note, I apologize for not wearing pink. It was not at the forefront of my mind this morning when I got dressed, and I realized when I got here, and everyone else was, I blew it. So I apologize, although I note it's a great cause. I have a family member who was diagnosed a few months ago. She's doing great. She's in remission, but if you can donate your time, or more importantly, your money to the cause this month or any month, please do. The research saves lives, and I will say, please enjoy Halloween. Be careful driving on Friday night. There are a lot of little kids running around, including my own, wearing dark costumes, chasing candy, not necessarily being as observant of the traffic laws as they should be, so be careful out there.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Barry.
Sure, thanks, Adam. So just a few updates. One is the Bucks County Roses and Mill Basin. Those are, you know, big projects happening in town. They're still in the development stage now, so we have not seen the final proposed plans, but we should be seeing those in the next couple of months. Two other developments are happening from a residential standpoint. One is Russell Gardens, a new road. So that's a development I mentioned before. It's 18 new houses going on New Road. It's right near the Russell Garden property. That property's going to be redeveloped there, and there's plans coming forward with the township. Then also on 424th Road, there's also a plan, there used to be a camp there, there's a six-slot subdivision that's being planned there. So anybody has any interest in making any comments or recommendations on these plans, you'll be able to do that within the next couple of months, it'll be coming forward with the township. The other thing I just want to give people an update on is the sale of the police building across the street. As you recall, the Trinity Group actually purchased the Bucks County Courier-Tombers Building earlier this year, and then the township made a decision to sell the police building. We did it through the RDA, and we had a very competitive bidding process. The Trinity Group, the building owners of the Courier-Tombers Building, have now entered a contract with the township and the RDA, RDA, which has been fully executed, to buy the police building. What they want to do is they want to turn to a designated town center, which could be very, very nice. We've seen some very plans for that. The plan is to have a brewery, restaurant on the site, and maybe two other food uses, which would be very, very good, maybe some small retail, too. The plan is for those folks to probably submit the plan on a preliminary basis to the township, and the township can review it with them to go through issues about parking and staffing and things like that, but it's moving along, which is very good. So hopefully, early 2026, we'll see some more activity there. That's all I have, Adam. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Just a couple of things for me. Bob mentioned it, but I wanted to just remind everybody Halloween is coming. Halloween safety, just watch out for our kids. Now, they'll be all over the place. I guess it's next Friday? Next Friday?
Yeah.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Thanks. Fire Department had their open house, their annual fire prevention open house. It was quite successful. The station out in Happer Road was a little less busy than it usually is, but it turned out some of those folks were coming up to the Richborough Station a little easier to park, so we'll take that under advisement. It is a little difficult out there when we have a lot of cars. This year, on fire prevention, the message and the theme is about lithium ion batteries and all the things that you charge in your home. Couple of quick safety points, never charge anything on a bed or a couch or a chair. It shouldn't, it should be on a hard surface. Always use the cords that come with the item, or use an approved cord, aftermarket cord. If you use the wrong charger, you could start a fire. And remember, don't overload those outlets with chargers, you know, spread them around the house a little bit, or charge them as one charges, then switch it out for something else. Just good safety points. E-bikes and e-scooters and all those things really shouldn't be charged in the house. They, if they catch fire, they catch fire in a big way, so be really careful with that. Other than that, last thing. Other than that, last thing I always talk about generally in October is it's fireplace time. So if you burn wood or you burn pellets, get your fireplace cleaned. It should be cleaned every year. You don't want to have a fire. Sometimes a fire in your chimney, you may not know it, and it can squeak into the attic. Before you know it, you have a real big problem. So get your chimney cleaned every year, and you'll have a good, safe winter. Thank you. Managers report.
No formal report this evening, but I would remind you that we're in the throes of budget preparation, and I know you're all anxiously waiting for my riveting presentation next month.
Yes.
Look forward to that.
Thanks, Bob. Assistant manager, Bill?
I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Solicitor, Joe?
No report, and a happy Halloween, everyone.
Thank you. Engineers report. Jacob?
I have nothing to report either tonight.
Great. Is there any public comment? Joe Lombardo. Just your name for the record, please.
Joe Lombardo, Holland.
Thanks.
I just want to bring to your attention a few positive events that have taken place recently. One of them was I was with some residents of the township, some ladies who walk and use the park, the municipal park out there, and they just wanted to bring to my attention, they said, "Not a complaint." They wanted to make sure it's not a complaint. To bring to my attention some things that they saw that they thought were maybe a little unsafe or a little, you know, need to be cleaned up or picked up or moved around and stuff like that. And they brought to my attention, and they wanted to say, "How can they help? Can they do something?" I said, "No, you really shouldn't do it. That park is, you know, part of the responsibility of the township." So I said, "You should really let the board of supervisors," that's where it starts, "let them know, and they'll let somebody in the township know, and it can probably take care of in short notice." Well, lo and behold, about last week sometime, I get a contact from a lady named Mary Jo, who was one of the ladies who walked there, and she was so happy and so excited that she went, they went for a walk, and everything was cleaned up. All the stuff that they talked about was cleaned up. They could see the stuff better, they had better visual sites, and I said, "That's great. I'm so happy." So she just wanted me, on behalf of Mary Jo, to thank the board of supervisors for getting that done so quickly. I don't know if you did it or not. I don't know who did it, but I just, she wanted to thank you all for that, and it was, I think what it really showed was that, you know, they felt they had a voice, they felt they said something, brought something to the attention, and by, lo and behold, it got done. So they felt very good about it. I think that is something that was very good. The other thing is, on Monday, I attended an event that was sponsored by Joe Hogan, but I think it was hosted right here at the firehouse. During that event, I learned something about the smoke detectors, which I didn't know, that you can get a smoke detector, I guess if you're a senior, you can get a smoke detector by calling a certain number, and they come out and look at it and would replace it if it's bad. That was very good information for me. I took it to a couple of my friends that are a little older and do need some help sometimes with getting on a ladder. In fact, they don't want to get on a ladder. And it always seems like my smoke detector always goes off at about 2:30 in the morning, right when I'm sleeping. But when they go off, it's important, and this is a great program. I'm glad, because I'm going to need it hopefully someday. So this was a great program, and it just, once again, these residents that I've talked to felt great that they know of this now and they can use the program. The last thing for me is a kind of an agenda item. I just, I saw it. It's about the police. I'm a big supporter of the police. I've worked with the Police Athletic League. As you can see on my shirt, I worked with them for many years with their programs. They're a great supporter of the police, and I'm really happy to hear in this community that a lot of the, this is a Ben Salem program, a summer program. A lot of the officers that administer this program and take care of this program, they live right here in Holland, Northampton. One lives in Holland, but they live right here in Northampton. And that is really good. And some of the kids that play come from families that live here in Northampton. So there's a real, like, you know, real community feeling for that, and it's really, really good. And I'm a big supporter, and I'm just glad to see that we were able to, through Bob's efforts, or whomever's efforts, everybody's efforts, that we were able to get a nice contract, amicable contract, and not have to go to arbitration. I've been in business, I've had to go through arbitration. Sometimes it's not a pleasant process. So I'm glad to hear that, because I really support the police. They really keep our community safe, and I really do appreciate them, and they do great things for the kids, too. So thank you. And Mary Jo, once again, says thank you to the board, and she was very happy for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ed?
Good evening, Ed Mayor, Churchville. Joe stole some of my thunder, but not all of it. I'm sure many of you, like me, have a daily goal to learn something new every day, and then go to bed and wake up the next day and try to learn something new the next day. I also was at the public safety event that was co-hosted with Representative Marcelle and Joe Hogan and others, right here at, is it Fire Station 3?
Yep.
Fire Station 3. It was an outstanding event, and I had three takeaways from the event. You can probably figure out what the first one is. I was able to speak to Representative Marcelle at great length about House Bill 1152, which is the EMS bill that the insurance company makes the payment directly to the EMS service and not to the people who receive the service. It turns out, after a pretty long discussion, that Representative Marcelle knows the sponsor of the bill, which is Representative Jill Cooper. And so she said, "I'm going to text Jill and try to get this bill out of committee." As you know, the bill's been in committee since April, and it's just languishing there. So that was my first takeaway. My second takeaway, I won't go beyond what Joe said, other than those alarms are available to everyone. They're not based on economic status or need. In fact, and it was provided by the American Red Cross table, was providing the information on the smoke alarms. And interestingly enough, you know, I just was trying to make a joke, like we change them when we change the clocks from Eastern Standard to Eastern Daylight, et cetera, and the guy said, "You don't need to do that. We make 10-year alarms now. You don't need to be doing that." I said, "No." Anyway, they do, you call a number, they gave out a card with a number. You call the number, they, you make an appointment, they come to your house, they see if you have enough smoke detectors, if they're the correct kind of smoke detectors, and make sure that they swap out with these 10-year smoke detectors. It's available to everybody. He says they're amazed at the number of people who don't take advantage of it. So there's that. You can get that number by going to American Red Cross, and on their website, you can find it. And then the third takeaway, the third learning of the day, is that the EMS team has something called the Yellow Dot Program, which I knew nothing about. And it just so happened that my wife was in a very serious car accident on 95 a couple weeks ago, and I wish that I had known about the Yellow Dot Program. But you just, you just fill out a brochure, a little tiny brochure that you fill out and you stick in your glove compartment, just has some vitals on you and, you know, what meds you might be on, or, you know, anything that they need to know about you in the event that you're not able to communicate with the emergency responders. And you get, and inside the brochure is just a small yellow tag, I'm sorry, decal, that you put on the back of your car. Whenever the EMS comes, like in our case, it was, I guess the Philadelphia Fire Department had the EMS come out because 95 was in the Philadelphia section, and it's a state highway. Anyway, you put this decal on the back of your car, and when the EMS comes, they see that decal, they know to go in your glove compartment, get out this brochure, and see if there's any medical issues that they need to know about as they transport you to the hospital. So three big learnings, great event from Representative Marcelle, and it was hosted at Fire Station 3.
All right.
So thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And your wife is okay in the accident?
She's fine. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there's no other public comment with no other business. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great Halloween, everybody.